Please stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we do roll call, I want to form the board that trustee Sigalski wishes to participate electronically due to the fact that his flight was canceled and was not able to get back in town on time. And that does meet the rules and regulations for electronic attendance and meetings use. With that being said, I need a motion to allow trustee Sigalski to participate via electronic. So, I'm being my trustee Jill Davis, second my trustee May Close. If I can have a roll call. Oh, I mean, let's schedule a roll call.
Blatter?
Yes.
We didn't take roll call.
I know, because we think they should do a roll call.
Okay, Blatter and Jill Davis?
Yes.
May Close?
Yes.
Sigalski, obviously, absolutely. Stapleton?
Yes.
And Virgilio?
Yes.
All right, roll call, please.
Blatter?
Here.
Jill Davis?
Present.
May Close?
Yes, here.
Sigalski absent.
No, no Sigalski.
Present electronically, okay.
Did you hear that, Rick? Rick?
Rick, are you here?
You ready?
Yep, okay, go ahead.
Stapleton?
Here.
Virgilio?
Here.
Hello?
Hey, Rick, we got you back if you lost it.
Yeah, now I'm back, yeah.
Wait.
Under oath. Okay.
We did the motion to have you participate electronically, Rick, if you can. Sherwin is going to call your name one more time as far as for attendance.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Um, I will go to audience participation in a second. Why don't you go ahead and read, just like read the motion report as far as getting the right ordinance and question.
The ordinance is the first one of this year, 2014. Ordinance O-1-14 repealing ordinance number O-10-13. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of Lamont Sports Complex revenues increment taxes, general sales tax revenue sharing receipts, alternate revenue source funds of the Village of Lamont, Cook County, and DuPage County, so going on. For the purpose of financing the Lamont Sports Complex and related across.
I need a motion to approve said ordinance. So move. My trustee Stapleton?
Okay.
Second my trustee Blatter. All right. What we are doing tonight is based upon the ordinance that we approved last year in regards to financing a $21 million bond for the sports complex that would entail the use of general obligation bonds in the event that, or in the event that any of our bonds that we ever do, for some reason we had to non-update them and then they would go on tax law. During that process, the public has a right during the 30 days to file petitions in regards to have that question, if so choose by, to be placed on the ballot in regards to if the $21 million bond would be financed using general obligation bonds. The petitions went out and were successful and had a successful showing as far as to have the right number to be able to put that question in regards to financing the sports complex with general obligation bonds on the ballot. At this time, the village board is taking up the question of repealing that based upon the issue of not wanting to go or not wanting to have the question placed on the ballot for the use of general obligation bonds. We heard loud and clear, which is, you know, the democratic process. We all believe in that and we are going forward with that. Some other background as far as to where we are at and how far away from we are at, if we even go forward with the complex. We have worked with Meserole Financial and have a funding mechanism in which to fund the bonds necessary to build the sports complex. They are the use of debt certificates and they have given us a preliminary review of what the interest rates would be for that type of funding. Our staff has run the financial numbers based upon other, based upon the studies that were done in the past on the dollar figures based upon revenue and cost per hour that these facilities rent out at and based upon the expense side of it, the interest rates, operating expenses, and to see if it is feasible under this financing structure, if it still makes sense. At the present time, it looks favorable to go in that direction. With that being said, we have started a dialogue with MWRD, the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, as we were doing previously. There has been no contracts signed with the water district. There has been no construction contract signed. There has been absolutely nothing. We have not signed, we have not even voted on an ordinance in order to put a facility in town. We have not picked a management company to run the facility. We are in discussions with individuals that have run different facilities around the state to test the waters and see where we're at a year later. I anticipate that we will be looking at, I don't even know what timeframe even is to look at as far as for MWRD right now and what their discussions are going to be like in regards to the facility. There's a new board there, there's a new executive director. They are open to leasing the facility to us, but we have no documents yet, they're not even in draft form yet for us to be able to look at. We have a concept. We have a concept of what the facility might look like. I have been in singular conversations with each board member and how they would like to see this process go forward and if we go forward at all with it. The philosophy of how the downtown was done and the redirection of the downtown with the front street lobs and the parking deck, where we had multiple, like the charrette that we had, different workshops, we're looking at those types of ideas. We're looking at different, you know, possibly a citizens advisory group where that group can work alongside the village board in regards to how this process goes further and how we try to take an opportunity in the Village of Lamont and make it a successful one. That's the main purpose of this board, is to look at opportunities that present themselves to this town to make this town flourish and continue to have people want to move to town and be able to have a strong growing economy. Just based upon doing nothing in this town, the town cannot sustain itself just based upon health insurance and pension costs alone. There has to be some type of new money that comes into this town. And that's just not the village board, that's the park district, that's the fire districts, that's the libraries, and that's people all over the state of Illinois. You know, the big one's going to be in about 20, in 2017, the Chicago Fire Department's pension fund goes broke. We'll see what happens in 2017. So that's where the background is, that's what we are looking at. We are not even, we are in a process, like you said, if MWRD comes up with new rules and regulations that they just adopted based upon water inflow rates or outflow rates, even though Lamont's are more stringent than theirs, the construction that would have to be done to retain stormwater down there may not be feasible, one feasible, two, it may not be practical. That would kill the project. Right now, the process has to go as far as on an engineering scale, as far as on an environmental engineering scale, they're asking for a Taco One remediation. Now, Virgilio is an environmental engineer. Jimmy, could you give a quick definition about Taco One, what you have to do to get a Taco One?
Basically, the MWRD has adopted more stringent standards than what the Illinois EPA says is allowable for residential use on this property. Since we are going to be using this for commercial industrial, MWRD hasn't looked at that. They just basically say across the board, it's got to be Taco Tier One. So this is going to require a policy change. I think MWRD has realized that Taco actually stands for, just so that you know, it's not, you know, you're not going through a drive-through and getting a Taco. It's tiered approach corrective action objectives. It's a set of regulations under 35 Illinois Administrative Code, Cart 742. And it's basically a set of standards that the EPA has created and it's based upon a tiered approach for Tier One is basically the most stringent, like I said, where they've accounted for every set of type of conditions that you could have on a property. So, and it's like if you meet that regardless of what your site-specific issues are, you're okay. However, they do allow for you to go beyond Tier One, this is the EPA now, which they call a Tier Two, where you could basically do modeling to demonstrate that you have site-specific standards to where you could create your own site-specific cleanup objectives. Beyond that, you could even go to a Tier Three or look at engineering barriers and administrative controls to minimize the impact to contamination that may be in place. MWRD's philosophy, I think they adopted this probably about 15 years ago when they started renegotiating leases, they just went across the board Tier One. So that's where we're at, we've actually talked to them for to where we'd like for them to adopt the EPA's regulations.
Thank you, thank you trustee Virgil, I appreciate that. One of the other new items they have is anything that goes on public land used for public purposes has to have permeable paver, excuse me, permeable pavers in the parking lot area like we do at the police station for water runoff and for stormwater management. If you know the site at all, in some areas, there's only eight inches of topsoil that's down there and it goes right to bedrock. That's why the MWRD on the other side of the bridge, on the old bridge where the treatment plant's at, where they're building a billion gallon storage facility for sewer right now, because that's going to become a pumping station, no longer going to be a treatment plant. They're going to pump everything from there all the way up to Stigme. They're going to run, they're going to run a tunnel underneath the canal and then they're going to have a pipeline, a channel that's going to run all the way down to Stigme and that's how our sewer's going to be treated right now, that's how they're going to go with that. They have to dynamite that rock to the tune of some, I don't know, what, can you remember the cubic yards of rock is? Some ungodly number, can you imagine what it is?
120 truckloads a day.
A hundred, it's 100 by day? It's 120 truckloads of rock a day is going to be coming out of that, out of MWRD's fight in the downtown for, I don't know how long. For at least a couple of months. So you can imagine if you put brick pavers, assuming simple, if you put brick pavers on top of ground bedrock, it doesn't go nowhere. It fills up and it would never run off. That's an obstacle, that's an engineering obstacle right now. That's a massive one based upon having a parking lot that would have 600 cars parked on it. I don't know where you, you know, stormwater's got to be run somewhere else. That could be a massive, if they stick to that, that could be a massive bill, kills the project. We are working through these right now. We are going to keep looking at the feasibility of what the plan is. And again, there is about, if this does go forward, there's probably probably anywhere from 10 to 15 more votes that have got to take place in regards to different steps of this process. Again, there's been no contracts left, there is no word back and forth. I did talk to the architect today that brought the project to us. They are looking at, they actually are doing, that architectural firm is doing the city of Chicago's park districts, big new facility in Beverly, the big new ice rink and indoor fields. And they're going to have, just based upon what they're doing there, the size of the building is similar to ours. So you would have some rough updated numbers as far as how big the panels are, how big steel is. And that's something that they're willing to kind of throw at us as far as an estimate of where the construction market's at right now. I know if the construction market is up, I deal in a warehouse and distribution center facilities on a daily basis. Stack buildings are being built, millions, million square foot buildings are being built again in the Romeo, Woodbridge, Bollingbrook area, they're going up. Obviously, they're shut down right now because you can't pour concrete. All those big farms report outside, they're not pouring concrete right now. It's not going to be pouring concrete for the foreseeable future. But buildings are in the queue to be built. That's going to raise demand, demand raise price. I don't know what that number is, I have no idea. So, that's where we're at in regards to where this is at. At this time, does trustees want to add anything before I open it up to audience participation?
About a second.
That's fine. Rick, you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, okay. Okay, just want to make sure. All right, there's many people that's here, I'm going to limit. Comments, please, to three minutes. And anybody that would like to speak? If I could, you know, ends will call you up and anybody can speak at any time.
There's also a sign and chief.
A sign and chief, please, because you need to come to podium, state your name and address, please, for the.
Okay, one of us will to write my name here?
Yes, sir. Please. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Al Schroeder. And I have just three questions, or two questions and comments. I mean, you very studiously avoided mentioning the interest rate that Meserole wants to charge us. And along with that, I had experience with.
Can you turn the mics up? Just speak louder, Al, just speak louder.
Okay, some years ago, the Lamont Township floated a $10 million bond for the open space area. It was $10 million. Through FOI, I found out that by the time we were done paying off the bond, it could be $16,125,000. That's like a 60% markup on the $10 million price. I would like to know the interest rate that Meserole wants to charge and what is the total interest that we're going to pay over the life of these instruments, whatever you want to call them. So we know the true cost of this facility, it's not going to be $20 million with any stretch of the imagination. It's going to be $20 million plus the interest on those instruments plus the guy knows how much in maintenance costs over the year. So do you have that in mind?
They've estimated a number of somewhere between 4 to 4.25%.
What's the, what the total interest we charge, we will pay on $20 million of instruments?
We can, we can, we can look at that as far as that, that's, I can, we can try to get a couple of that number for you, you get it?
Well, I think it would be very interesting to the taxpayers because they're not going to pay $20 million, they're going to pay whatever hell that $20 million is going to cost in interest. Now, another observation I'd like to make, addresses back to your opening comments where you said, this is a democratic process and the board believes in a democratic process. And I would challenge that because this entire decision-making process has been shrouded in virtuous secrecy. This is sprung upon the people with no input from anybody of any kind. There are 16,600 people living in Lamont and I dare say a handful of them, a relative handful, know what's going on here. By the time you get done with your 16 decision points, it'll be too late for us, for the people that you're supposed to represent or actually representing the way you want to be. If you truly believe in a democracy, then you have to realize that elected people represent interests of the people they're supposed to represent, not just sitting up there physically. You're not physically representing, you're supposed to represent what you think, what you know the majority of people in Lamont want. I dare say this is not the case. And I would like to save you the trouble of going to the 16 meetings you're talking about to get this aborted horrible project undertaken. And let's have a, some way to put it online. You've got a website, put a special question on there, how many people want this project authorized? And then go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. James G. Lattis, 90 Timberline Drive, 25-year resident of Lamont. Today, the governors declared Illinois a disaster area because of the weather that we're experiencing. And I'm here tonight concerned that you're about to embark on a disaster with this project. Fox News recently said, "We are going through the worst recovery in the history of the United States" after the horrible period we went back, we've been through since 2008. The Chicago Tribune this weekend said, "Illinois recovery stuck in low gear." And yet, you, Mr. Mayor, and the village board are talking about borrowing $21 million somehow. We don't really know from whom. And engaging in a development that's really going to be competing with the private sector for business. I, for one, don't think that government really belongs competing with the private sector, but that's my opinion. But with this project, there's still so much confusion and uncertainties. Just today, you said there's no management team, but back in February, we were addressed by the representative of the management team that's going to run the facility. So I don't know what happened there. We know that the land that you're planning to build on will have to lease and it's currently polluted land that apparently is going to be dealt with with a taco or perhaps an enchilada. I don't know. But I know this, there are still too many questions and too many, too much confusion from my point of view to move ahead. But in our meeting with you, Mr. Mayor, the eight representatives of love who met with you about a month ago, you said you'd been told that if you wanted to, you could have gone out and collected 1,700 signatures in favor of this proposal. And I can appreciate your point of view and I'm glad to see that you're so confident and so positive. But if that is the case, why don't we move on your original ordinance? The funding mechanisms there, not general obligation bonds, by the way, that's another point I'm confused about because according to petition, it said alternate revenue bonds. Now, you know, I'm not a bond expert, but it sounds different to me. And also, we know that it was backed up with current village revenues, sales tax, income tax, other taxes that I don't even know about. And those taxes you have stated to us would still be pledged to cover any losses with this borrowing. But that's not the point, my point is, we have a referendum on the table. You are confident that people want this, let us go and vote. We are not opposed. Many of us are not opposed to, you know, a bonding source, yes, I'm wrapping it up right now. We're not opposed to a bonding source, we're opposed to putting our tax money on the line. So I say, prove us doubters wrong, put the ordinance on the ballot, don't withdraw it today, let us vote.
Anybody else? Go. Sir? Go, go.
Two notes I'm going to have to make in this meeting, it's Michelle Mabel-Cleaner. I was born and raised here, I lived at some, I lived at some King East Custom Street in Lamont. I have two children that I've raised since they were little as a senior mom. My son played basketball, traveling basketball. I'm not a finance major and art major, but he do know a little bit about sports. And my daughter is also in sports. So I just came down here because, one, I think it's a very bad idea. I appreciate what you're saying, Mayor, that you're trying to come up with an idea to bring, you know, some revenue into the town, so I really appreciate that. I can tell you, I opened my own business, not in this town, it's too difficult to get a permit. There's, it's so complicated that I decided not to do it in this town. So that might be something that you guys can check into if somebody wants to open a business because it's, it was extremely easy. It went down this road, it's extremely easy and people are very supportive. So that might be something different that you guys can check into. Also, I don't know, you were saying about an architect firm, you know, did you check into an architect firm maybe in this town that could help with the process? Because I think they would have more interest if they made from outside, from a different town. Oh, the other thing I was going to ask you is, how, what investigating did you do, like what other facilities around here exist? How many of them? And what makes, I guess, all the board members, what makes you guys think that all of a sudden, everybody's going to drop the ones that they go to and all of a sudden go to Lamont? I mean, I, you know, if everybody's happy where they're at, where does that come into play? I guess that's something else that I would consider because just because it's closer, you know, maybe it ends up to be more expensive, people want to, don't want to do that. So, I don't know, those were just things like off the top of my head that I came up with that, again, I don't have the background of, I'm sorry, Jeanette or anything, but knowing sports and, you know, that kind of thing, it makes sense to me if there's enough competition to not do that. I feel like it would take away from the park district. What would happen to the park district, I mean, would it be an empty building? And then what if this doesn't go over and it ends up to be the state empty building? Then what, we have an ice floor, who goes in there, is it now more condos? Condos, they didn't even fill up or took a hard time to fill up, so. Anyway, just some things off the top of my head that I, so I've been really, I guess I've been saying this, I really appreciate you guys, really consider. is, I really appreciate you guys really considering, instead of just keep going forward thinking this is a great idea, because I really feel in my heart 100% that it won't go over. And then now, we're stuck fixing roads because all those trucks were, you know, in roads or, you know, the EPA, I don't know, I just think it's not as well thought up. Again, I appreciate the idea of trying to bring in a lot of money into this town and I agree, but maybe, you know, maybe put it like the other gentleman was saying, like maybe put it out there, hey, does anybody else have any other ideas? Just as a layperson to, hey, what can we do to help this town out? What can we do? I mean, one of the things that, actually I was talking to somebody else, they brought it up and it was true that it is helpful from that. So maybe make it easier that way. And I know like even down this road, they have a Christmas walk, they have ice sculpture, they have, no, they have all these different things that every single month, there's something in the town. So that might be, you know, another way to go.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Salazar and I've been in Lamont for 15, 15 years. I've seen the town change in these last 15 years and I can't always say it's been for the better. I appreciate what the board has put on the table, your time, your effort for looking into new ways of rejuvenating the town. I clearly am among the minor here where I think it is quite possible to do. I mean, I have voice-like opinion on the patch as frequently as everyone else does and people who agree with me don't either because we don't have time for that and we don't have, I don't know, we don't have all the answers either, so we're not going to put ourselves out there to assume that we do. Those of you who think that it's going to take away from competition, I'll tell you that firsthand, it's not the case. We have games at 6:00 AM because those facilities cannot accommodate us. We have games to play at 9:30 PM because all those facilities cannot accommodate us. We go to Westmont Era, we go to Bo Jackson, we go to Bridgeview Dome, we go to Chicago Sports Facility, which is basically.